All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order here at eight thirty A M. Being John McCain is not here right now, we'll come jump over that and go to.
Oh my goodness, I better run to my desk, I forgot to bring your stuff.
I'm so sorry. Press for proposals?
Yes. Sorry.
Do you wanna give us an update on, do you have an update on the Moore Street?
Uh bids are due three P M today.
Okay.
So uh nobody submits bids early, so I'll get it. Bids at three o'clock, there's uh five different plant holders, five different contractors took out plans to look at it.
Okay.
That doesn't mean we're gonna get five bids, in fact, probably one.
Yeah.
Um so about four o'clock, I will have the results for them. I was telling Judy earlier, I'll look at them. We'll do a bid tabulation. Check everybody's math and then we'll send that to you here and assuming that you have the money to do it, we would do a notice of award.
Yep.
Which is that single page, piece of paper that says Mister or Mrs. Contractor you.
Yeah.
Be awarded and then we'll do our contract signing.
Okay, great, kinda like we did with um.
I see that D O T is out there working, so they should be done with their stock before. The town starts the water main, so we should.
Eighty Bell Street, but then uh this whole number of bits.
So we think we got it and they know that they're waiting on us.
Yeah. We've talked to Kathy about giving some help with the light service lines.
For identifying, so.
Identifying.
Okay.
They know they're coming to do the, we were, they, anybody that calls, they'll know.
Yeah.
They're the only people that have been acquired anyways.
Sure.
Cause they could do a cheaper. Because we were putting two out at the same time, it would be cheaper if we could have done one together, but.
No, it's.
We can't, and we gotta get Main Street fixed.
So. So the, so these aren't labeled though?
Yeah, they are rated the bottom.
Oh Bell Street, Route Three, okay, so we'll open the Bell Street one first. We put in out, put out an R P for paving Bell Street um. For the first one. The mine um. So it will be to mill and fail to a depth of one and, one and a half inches to eighteen inches wide by one hundred seventy five. Approximately two thousand five hundred fifty square yards. So that price is forty eight four hundred. Which is about what?
Yep, seven street was, yep.
And school street.
We're gonna put them on this.
No, we're gonna accept the bid.
Well, you know, we're not gonna do it.
We're good. Right, right, right.
Right, but not, they know.
Next week.
Turn to Sam.
Um.
Might say right on.
Just because my contact was.
Have guys little bit, split in between service line seven sixty.
Um he is aware of that.
Alright.
He was. Because they're the only people, they're the only company listening to the bid, but they can't because. And I told them that we'd probably be out until the fall.
Right.
Because we had to identify the, the land um.
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily say, it just says pricing is based on May twenty twenty five against D O C, D O T, A C posting.
Okay.
Any change in the A C, but we'll front the price.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Good.
Alright, so make a motion to accept the uh proposal for Bell Street um G M I asphalt in the amount of forty eight thousand four hundred.
Definitely.
Alright, all those in favor?
Alright.
Do you need me to sign this? Alright, next up we have an R P for paving um New Hampshire Route Three. Due to the water main break, so Main Street.
Yeah.
So the repair on Main Street, um we've received one, one proposal for that, well, that's for the.
We, we only received one from.
This guy's answer is like, yeah. Oh, that's good.
They're very busy there.
No, I just said.
We have proposals. From uh G M I. Most furniture materials and form the labor necessary for completion of project New Hampshire Route Three permanent trench repair due to the water main break. Traffic to be routed through adjacent parking lots, libraries will be provided in case traffic volume does not allow and the town to provide an officer during the duration of the work needed. G M I will provide signage for temporary traffic shift, alternate fees and inspections. Provided by others. Um. Will they, will they speak to uh the Clark family about using that parking lot? Like, like what, okay, so we'll make sure to ask for that first. Uh so the total cost for this would be twenty six thousand nine.
No, I just did.
Um there's a cool, cool plane, the existing area to a depth of five inches. Supply install a new base three quarter inch asphalt in the temporary patch area at three inch thickness to be acted.
That's what G one back for when you.
Yeah.
No, I know, but just. It's a mall against pretty high one, I know.
Yeah.
So it's a different, different street on the whole lot.
So road, road striping is not related to this? Who, does it state?
We're hoping to get it done before they come out to paint their lines and then we're good.
Okay, alright, so we just have to make, make them load it up, alright, so. As we make a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept the um G M I. Proposal for the New Hampshire Route Three trench repair in the amount of twenty six thousand nine hundred, second.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? Alright. Yeah, so we've also put out an R F P for fencing. We're seeking proposals for qualified companies to install a eight hundred and sixty foot, or linear feet of six foot high chain link fence. With three rows of barbed wire surrounding the well pump houses. So we received one bid via email.
I think for both, so it's with them, both, both the pieces are on that with that proposal.
Okay. So this is for Well Road. And the ice.
The storage tank.
Storage. Our storage, our storage is out of property, yeah. Over the reservoir.
Yep. Yep.
We had a board with this.
Um.
And I checked it.
Okay, so Well Road is in the amount of sixty two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and the um reservoir tank is. Twenty seven thousand four hundred and eight. So a total of ninety thousand one fifty.
We budgeted that.
Uh I know, but still.
I know, it's.
It really is too bad we don't make that perimeter show pretty balanced.
I think that's.
Yeah.
He's trying to have to do it.
Yeah.
Is this, do you have grant, grant money for this though? Not part of this, okay.
This isn't mine, I never been in the water budget.
Okay, um and the estimate came in from Superior Fence Company out of Bell.
And we have, we, that's what we planned behind this, it's a little less than. But that's not much, so.
I think we did.
Great.
So you're in motion?
Yes, um I make a motion to accept the um proposal from Superior Fence Company. For the fencing around Well Road and the reservoir tank in the amount of ninety thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, do you want a second?
Oh, good.
Lot of money there.
Yeah, we are, all those in favor?
Alright.
Uh there's nothing to sign with this, so I feel something.
I'll send you the notes to.
Okay.
Or maybe they'll send something or you sign out.
When we have a security, I don't know, it's on.
I didn't watch.
Um great. Well, there's three cars.
There's a very thing that happens.
Steve will, Steve closes today.
Alright, you know.
Yes, we talked about that when you went down, we did the proposals, yeah, we did something or not, we figured. He'd have something to us by late afternoon.
So we'll schedule a workshop to, do they have to sign the notice of, the notice of award? For you? That's right, so we'll schedule a workshop if it's. Not. So that we don't hold him up for another two weeks?
Sure.
Okay, if you wanna keep that moving.
So we're all looking at a date right now, while we're.
Well, I think.
We don't know when it's gonna be.
I'll have the results to you by the end of the day.
Okay.
So you'll know what it's gonna cost, and if you wanna move forward, I, I can do a notice of award.
We have to go, so.
Exactly, something else I have to wait.
No, I do.
Um.
July again. Now.
Do you need to be present, Steve? Oh, so we could work it out.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that.
I'm in love with those people.
You're right. After four, I need her after four, I'm driving.
Did not make any money, money.
Yeah, money.
But I would come in and do.
Where not?
Alright, let's do this.
If we do it in the morning, I'm gonna do it.
Um.
I'm free on this.
I'm not. Watching, I'm, I'm just. I'm gone four days last week.
Yeah.
I didn't. Where, what?
I've gone four days.
So maybe if we do a four o'clock party after we're opening it up. We need to go to school and stuff.
Great, okay.
When do you think they can move it? July, sure.
Well, yeah, I know that.
I'm sure in the middle of the summer, yeah.
We'll, we'll award in the contract in June, by the time they get their materials and get set up, you're July fourth weekend.
Mike had the elect. I'm, I'm.
Using that little.
Just to be sure.
We can put it off, there's no reason it has to be. It could be done in August, September.
And we have to go get easements from both property owners.
Or the week before.
So.
All those people going in and out of.
You have a ninety day big, big valid period, so you could actually push it on until then.
I'm just thinking that uh. We're gonna have to use that other access to the.
Were you signed?
Um, yeah, yeah.
So it's really a miserable access to that, one that comes out on Main Street, the people almost get killed. When they use it, so I think we should wait until, we, we, we don't wanna do it when people sees it like a dog. I don't, what, whatever you're saying, bro.
I would say we usually, typically the week after.
The fourth.
The fourth, it tends to be, it tends to be a little quieter, but with fourths on Friday though, I don't know.
I know we can't tell.
No, it's probably three weeks worth of work.
Oh.
And it's only two hundred feet, but you gotta come up the hill, you're right on Main Street.
Yeah.
We're gonna slash that number.
Yeah.
They'll probably be leaving in the street for a week.
We're gonna, we gotta.
But you got the whole parking lot worked, you got the storm drainage and stuff down and back, so.
They'd be better off, we'd have to live with it.
But aren't we working with the state, cause we're gonna be there for the sidewalk and everything else?
Yeah.
Yeah, they seem, you know, we had a bunch of state guys out there. They seemed pretty, pretty quick.
So we could get a jump start, cause I think if, I would just fear that if we wait until after Labor Day to start, the week after Labor Day to start, you're gonna be right into the full season. Where you have buses coming through there, so buses would be a nightmare.
The, the week, the week before of Labor Day is bad.
So we have, but we have to have a conversation with the state because we still are signing with our project, with the sidewalk project and everything that's going on there.
Oh yeah, we'll have to work on it, but I'm just, we're just.
Have that conversation about to make sure we're still aligning. With there, it's, aren't they gonna be ripping out that sidewalk too?
Yes.
We, we won't be ripping.
No, they will, and it's gonna tie all together, so.
I mean that, cause that enters into the parking lot, it's dangerous, it's a lose. But if you lose.
We live down, that was crosswalk there.
I know, living crosswalk.
I think we gotta talk to them sooner than later before.
I agree, we, we need to just do some research.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we should talk to Mike too, you know, it's gonna screw him up, not anybody, so. I'm talking, somebody's thought, I was just getting thoughts, I'm not gonna.
Maybe not, maybe staple coming and have a pile.
Yeah, it's on a workshop, I'm figuring that. I don't know if they will or not, like, yeah.
And we talked.
Is it that map that's heading up? Map in District One that's heading that whole project right there, you know?
Uh well, yeah, him and the local guys, patrol guys are up, we, we just met out there. Two weeks ago and, and they, they've since started their work on the drainage, but basically what. We decided, or what they decided, that we were gonna do, our town's gonna do their work first, cause we're deeper. And then they would come in afterwards, so I think, we'll only be in route. On twelve for a week at the most, I mean, it's only a hundred feet.
I'm not even that worried about one twelve, I'm more worried about.
On Wall Street.
I mean, cause that is.
No, I'm not.
For every day.
Maybe. Maybe we think more beneficial for them too, when they're still. We can ask, yeah.
One twelve is gonna screw it up too, but.
You go around that corner where it goes, when you have something going on.
It's not a good time to die, no matter.
Not all the time.
Um next up, we have to approve and sign the minutes from the May sixth meeting.
I think, make a motion to do the minutes from the May sixth meeting, is that you?
No.
Alright, so I think, I'll make that, I'll make a motion, but I can't.
Yeah, we'll make that one.
And I will make.
And I will second that.
And I'll be at every one till November.
And Scott will abstain.
Scott will abstain, the other two are in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Don't let them Scott seems.
Okay. Um. Okay, now, um.
The tax, thank you.
Yes.
Um. The deed, yeah, the deed date is this week, Thursday.
Okay.
We are down to three.
Again.
Um.
To move from last year's tone?
Yes, to, from last year, so one thirty two Paradise Road.
Yeah.
That's right.
But yes, I would recommend that, although we've already. Um made a motion, we voted to, to deed it, but remember Laura was trying to get back to research, cause she feels like it might be some COVID going on.
Right.
Um I would make, still make a motion to deed again, just so we're legally tactics, I don't know.
Okay.
Um if that is not paid by May twenty second and sign the, um sign in the office.
Okay. Um so I'll make that motion to deed.
Yeah.
One thirty two Paradise, if not paid by the twenty second, you said, right?
Twenty second, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the total on that?
Uh the total on that is two thousand seven hundred and thirty nine.
So twenty two Dwarf condo, it's the ongoing saga, there is nothing really we've been doing because. We can't track any ownership to it.
It's cave there, right?
It is, it's demolished, there's association fees, we've tried to work with the association to say, hey. Why don't you take it for association fees, because the town is not invested just for town, because. And they are, they don't wanna sign, last I knew that they didn't wanna sign part of an agreement, because. They're saying we didn't have to pay association fees, but it's a total of, they have to.
Oh yeah.
So they start to work on it, but then they kinda go.
So if we took it and put it right up for auction. To cover and obviously, I would think that we would get enough from auction pay, but because of the association fees and they're expecting those to be backpaid.
They, they could potentially, yes.
So that's why we're staying away from it, yeah.
We're ready.
We've tried, we've had them in here to try and work out.
Where, where are they?
I have no idea. We don't typically do like, you know, taking any of those association fees, they're like, yes.
Right.
I'm really hoping that they'll eventually, I did know, there was a family that was working on it to try and take it. They were working with a lawyer, it's a pretty long process to find.
Yeah.
It's like an abandoned property type thing.
Yeah.
They're saying they wanna get rid of that, isn't it? It's a nice side. It's a good change to them.
I think, but this has been, it, it's been, was it two thousand eleven Hurricane Irene?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when it really, so it's been like that for fourteen years, so.
Mark, so you're not working with us, hello?
He was at one time, that's when we toured it with the assessors and tried to. See what. I really feel like this is gonna be like a tiny movie story about this, this um property, it's very interesting. Um but anyways, um zero Daniel Webster Highway. So this is the first time it's appeared on our list.
Yeah.
We have. So Cheryl has, we've talked to Conflin and Reynolds, trying to track this back and figure out, has the property sold? Um.
This is one of the closest?
No, this, this is common land actually, which typically doesn't get taxed, right, because it's the roads coming in or whatever, however. They built a building on the common land property without a building permit that the assessors picked up. So now it becomes taxable. Um. I would recommend that you guys motion to sign a deed waiver on this one. And revisit it at a later date, because we are working with people to make sure that, we're not sure what properly. Tax it, you know, something to the front owner or the front address. Because we believe it might belong to the association. And they should be getting the bill, so we're in the middle of working with.
So we wanna stop.
Um yes, because we are looking to make sure that we are actually.
Doing right.
Notifying the right people and, um, because. This actually goes back to the original owner, there's this ink. And it's owned by another group, we don't know.
Really?
Down on Daniel Webster Highway. It's part of the Jackal and Common Land. Which is typically, like, they have an area of common land for them, all that's not taxable, cause it's like the road going in and. It's just that, so. I don't think, I don't think the owner or address has ever been updated, but honestly, since Bob Kitty's days. And the only reason it's come back on our tax rule is because during a visit by the assessors, they picked up. This.
The ship.
It's like a maintenance building.
Yeah.
And so that. It becomes taxable and. And this lot also was created during the remapping in two thousand ten, so. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts here, we're not sure that we are.
No, I think we need to investigate it before we.
So um we will work on that, Conflin and Reynolds is gonna try to help us.
Great.
We're gonna reach out to some people that we know that live there and see if we can find a president in the association or something.
Okay.
Um we just found out yesterday. Mike Conflin was able to help us, he say, listen, this is common land. It's tied to the common land part, I'm not sure that we are noticing and that this ink goes back to Bob Kitty, so don't believe them, you know, the. You have the front door on the shelf.
Yeah, is that on the cement?
Yeah.
It looks like it's on, yeah.
Okay, so it's not like it would easily.
No.
So I um would recommend. If this is not paid by this twenty second, signing a deed waiver would be the other one.
And revisiting in two to three months.
Yeah, I made that motion.
Alright, I'll second.
Bye.
Oh, it's in favor, yeah, sorry, it's delayed, I, okay.
Well, I'm not talking a whole lot.
No.
No.
Yeah, and I think was the.
I don't.
I think this will be easily resolved, if we can just figure out where, who, yeah, who's responsible for it. Okay. Great.
Anybody want to check with? Eric Chandler?
They're on our list. Yeah.
Yeah, at least now we're.
That's what we're thinking, yeah. And I'm gonna reach, try to reach out to Miss Ella Khan, she was there with him, she has a lot of knowledge for him.
Oh, yeah, but we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
So she can help us pinpoint it.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Um other business, one business brought work by the board. Amazon Business Card. Yeah.
So right now, we have been just using the credit card that we normally have, but we're. Not reaping the benefits that we could be reaping, and these departments are now ordering more, I got a lawnmower sitting in my. Um office from there, so I just feel like. All departments are starting to utilize it more and it might be beneficial for us to actually make the move to apply.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And they'll still go through the credit card process, just like they do now, have your signature before they choose.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted permission to apply for it before.
Yeah, I make a motion to um. Allow Judy Welch to apply for an Amazon Business Card upon, if you have the time. All those in favor?
Alright.
I. Um. Joint Board Meeting.
Um yes, I'm looking to reschedule your June third meeting to June second. And have a joint meeting, just root, a routine quarterly one. It seemed to be a date that worked for them, um.
I'm going.
Us, so.
So we, we would have ours on the first, second?
No, I'll reschedule your third, I'd like to take your third meeting, June third, and move it to June second.
Okay.
My, from a Tuesday to a Monday.
Or.
Well, what, will I have it losing warm?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the booster ramp, but it was not funny, but when it's cold, it's still warm.
So the length of the meeting is five, right?
I'm not sure if it's five, five thirty, I have.
Five thirty?
Yeah, being short.
Well, usually.
Do they meet weekly?
No, I don't think so.
What's pressing?
It's really um. Actually, Mike.
It just.
I think it's routine.
Okay, so could we maybe go back to them with June sixteenth, is that, would that be an issue for anybody?
Awesome.
I will go back to them, reschedule seventeenth to the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Then you.
Now, are, are you all available for the sixteen, uh the sixteen?
By January sixteen?
No.
Okay.
I have a difference.
Okay. Um. How about the thirtieth of June?
Yeah.
Maybe June thirtieth?
Other way, no, sure.
Okay.
And then look, I would, you can first go into like the.
Yeah, that's fine, this is, it's gonna be quiet, it'll turn out quiet. Yeah, that's fine, this is, it's gonna be quiet, it'll be quiet, never into, that's a lot for four. That'd be good, yeah.
Okay. So June thirtieth, I will try to put that.
Okay, great. And we'll reschedule on first. Our meeting on the first for the revealing.
Yep, I will try.
Alright, so we're, we're gonna bounce to our, to the meeting.
Yes. I'm sorry, so, so keep your phone on.
I can draw.
I know.
Okay.
That was a wonderful, should you guys need one?
Sounds good.
Or what, I always bring it back when I'm speaking, well.
Yeah.
By the way.
I'll break it at any point if I need to do that.
Uh, public participation on any agenda items? Yes, sir.
On agenda items, I.
Yes.
So I guess it'd be signing of the last minutes, in the last. Minutes, the end of the. Meeting, it was mentioned that Soldier Park would be. Addressed at this.
I, well, I reached out to both the people. And they didn't wanna be on the agenda for it anymore. But I didn't add it. So. They, uh, they were told to bring it back to the next meeting, but they didn't wanna bring it back to the next meeting, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yes, no, they, they didn't wanna be discussed in the next meeting.
Both the topics that were, I. I contacted.
Yes, sir.
It's cause I'm satisfied with the results of. Perfectly said.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Goodbye.
No, that's okay. Um. And who else? I believe we're gonna pop into non-public real quick. Under ninety-one, only pulling three. Okay, let's.
Let me just show you something here, Judy and Cory, leave, um.
Oh, maybe Scott, or, or maybe Steve, absolutely, Steve.
I made the motion, Gil, do you second? Okay, and we will not be coming back.
So this is for Route Three.